Good morning. Happy Pi Day. Okay, welcome to today's workshop. We have three separate workshops today. The second one will be on the Central Florida Leadership Academy. The third one will be, and hopefully Commissioner Sheehan will be here because relates to stuff that she's interested in, the H P B B Z A issues that we've had on a couple of quasi judicials lately. And first of all, we're going to start with an update on the I-4 Ultimate project, which is a six-year transformational project in our community that has affected everybody's commute so far, but not too badly, I hope. Charles Ramdat, our Deputy Director of Public Works, will introduce the workshop and our speakers. Charles?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Charles Ramdat, Public Works Department. I've had the honor of working with DOT for several years as we move towards the commencement of the construction of the ultimate I-4 improvements. And for the past year, I've been working with them in this new phase. This morning, we have with us District Secretary from District Five in Deland, DOT District Five, Ms. Noran Downs, accompanied by Director of Transportation Development, Mr. Franco Day, and the Program Manager for the ultimate I-4 project, Ms. Lorraine Bobo. And they will come up and do a brief presentation. We have several city staff members who continue to work with them. There's a group who's working with them on aesthetics and gateways. There is another group that's working with them on drainage and related matters. Yet another group is working with them on roadway and civil matters. And then there are a number of smaller groups working with them to make sure that our venues are thought of as the project continues. There's one group that works directly regarding Amway Center events, and another group that works with things such as Citrus Bowl and soccer. So, without further ado, Ms. Noran Downs.
Welcome, Noran.
Thank you.
You're getting to be a regular here.
What?
You are becoming a regular speaker here.
I know. New topic today for me, but we are feverishly working on I-4. And how do we get all the work done doing this year? I think we're doing about 1.7 billion is we, we have myself, who is the lead for Sun Rail. We have Franco Day, who is the lead for I-4, and Alan Hyman, who is the lead for Wakayava. So when decisions have to go all the way up, that's how we get it done, so you don't have to go to too many people. So with that, thank you for having us, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. A brief overview. As you know, it's been 21 miles, and the scope is widening two extra lanes in each direction for dynamic tolling. We will reconstruct 15 interchanges, and look at all the bridges, 13 widens, 53 adds, and 74 replacements. So that's pretty good, getting them all done. We're also increasing the speed limit to 60 miles an hour. And the scope of work is this concessionaire runs the project, including maintenance, for 40 years. It is a $2.3 million, a billion-dollar project with a design phase of six years or so. The mobility partners is Skanska and Lane. And we have a quality assurance firm that they have, which is Volker, and our designer was H D R. So there's your typical section. You will see the six general use lanes and the four express lanes in the middle. Miami is doing it. They hated it in the beginning, and they ran over the bollards, and now they use it all the time. So luckily, they were the first ones in Florida to get used to it. But the good news is, the more that people take the option of the I-4 express lanes, it will also increase the speed limit of the general use lanes. And Miami has shown that to be up to 20 miles an hour more in cases. So everybody wins. And DOT does set the toll rates and collects the tolls. Of course, we are using our own turnpike for that. And there's several slip ramps. We have six to seven access points in each direction. Again, it's dynamic tolling, all-electric tolling, everyone pays, and no heavy trucks. My mom was the type that would use it just because she doesn't want to be around the truck. So that's always a good thing. This is what the concessionaire showed what would look like for the aesthetics. And as you know, we've been working feverishly with you on a wonderful aesthetics plan under the bridge district as well. And so there's great things to come in the future. And this was what it will look like at night. This is what the winners had, so you could see how it's going to be very pretty and iconic.
Good morning. Franco Day, Director of Development for the DOT District Five. And we just had a milestone last month. We basically have a one-year-old now. We've been under construction for a year on I-4. So lots happened in that year. In October 2014 is actually when we awarded the design and issued our first notice to proceed. But February of 2015 is when our contractor went out there and started taking over the maintenance of the corridor, as well as started construction. We are still on track for completion in early 2021. But we do have a terrible two-year-old on our hands at this point. We talked about operations and maintenance, and Secretary Downs mentioned that this contractor will not only design and build this, but they'll be maintaining it for the next 40 years, so 35 years after construction. And this just gives an overview of how much maintenance and operations comes into play. In December of 2015, we had about 1,200 to 1,300 incidents out there. It averages around 1,500 incidents a month that our concessionaire is out there dealing with disabled vehicles, crashes. They work with the law enforcement on doing lane closures. We've actually been very impressed with their responsiveness. This is a performance-based contract. It's a little unusual in that there's certain measures they have to meet. And they have to have incidents cleared within specific time periods, and they're not to exceed 30 minutes. And basically, through this point, they've been exceeding that. They've been half that, roughly, around 15 minutes or less on average. So we've been very positively happy with the results of the performance on the maintenance. There are serious repercussions if they don't. So that has their attention, because again, performance, and they get paid for their performance. If they don't meet their measures, there will be serious deductions. That actually continues all the way through the 35 years. If there's incidents on the toll on the roadway, depending on the time of day, if it happens at 2:00 in the morning, they're given a little more time to clear the incident. But if it's in rush hour, there's very tight timeframes to get the road clear. And if they don't meet it, they take a hit on their payments. Here's just some of the fun stuff. I'm a construction guy, so we've been under construction for about a year. In the upper left-hand corner is a picture of what it looked like back before we began construction. And this is down at the Kirkman interchange. Kirkman, there's a whole lot going on there. Early in the design, or a few years ago, we worked with the city to add the whole Grand National overpass. And of course, there, we added a bonus work element for the contractor to get that open as quick as possible. So they are doing everything in their power to beat that deadline. And so in the lower right-hand corner, you get an update of what they're at earlier this year. Again, this is Kirkman as well, showing the progress that's been made to date. Downtown, here's our Vi-Duct area that you guys are very familiar with. To the left is what it looked like when we began, and to the right, you see what you guys are witnessing every day. Tremendous amount of work. The piles are going in for the center bridges. And of course, down here at Ivanhoe, that was a tough area. We had to close the entrance and exit ramps there, but there's making a lot of progress. One area that we are all very familiar with is the Fairbanks Curve. And they've started working in that area as well. You can see from the pictures before and after. Initially, they're making it a little bit tighter, but eventually, they'll be widening that curve, so cars will be able to go through there at normal speed and not run any risks of accidents. I'm going to turn it over to Lorraine for her arrest.
Good morning. So sound walls are going up throughout the corridor. Right now, we're working on the ground-mounted sound walls. We have another two to three weeks before those are complete. There's not a lot of area that has ground-mounted wall because of the widening that we need to do, but one of the bonus work elements was to get the ground-mounted walls done. Most of the walls that we have are shoulder-mounted. So we first have to do the widening, and then the walls will go on top of the barrier wall on the outside there. So a lot of folks are like, where's my sound wall? I was told I was going to get one. It's coming. It's just a few years out. And if you need more information on those locations, I did bring some printouts today, but all of those are also on our website, so you can direct folks there. Another thing that is very important on the job is workers. We're going to need, at peak, about 1,000 hourly craft workers by next summer. That's a lot of people that we need on the job. Right now, we're at about 650, but that includes our salary workers and our hourly. And so we're going to be continuing to hire over the next year. One of the neat things about the project is we have 250 on-the-job training opportunities. And those will be spread out over the six years of construction. But those are the folks that, hey, I've never worked in construction before, but I'm willing to work, I'm willing to show up on time, and be a hard worker, if you'll teach me. And so we definitely have those opportunities. Brought to... We have two success stories. We have several success stories, but two that I'd like to highlight from the Paramore area. I'm sure. Courtney Harris and Laura McCray are from Paramore. And they were hired on with the O J T program in August, and they're two of our first graduates. But they came and applied for jobs and got the opportunities. And my understanding is that they're two of our best employees out there. They want to learn more. They want to, hey, I learned this, but I want to get into be a superintendent and that type of thing. So there are a lot of opportunities out there. Something I've never seen on a project before that we have is S G L, which is the Skanska Granite Lane Joint Venture of Contractors. They have set up an office on 409 West Robinson, so it's right there where the railroad track crosses Huey at Robinson. That's where you apply for jobs. You can go in, I think it's like Monday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. There's certain days that you go in and can apply for a job. They'll tell you what positions are available, and they'll say, you know, I'm interested in this craft position, this labor position. All that information is on the slide here. It's also on our website. There's a lot of really good opportunities. Little bit about our schedule. Like Frank mentioned, we signed our contract in September '14 with design and construction starting several months later. We're looking to complete by the end of 2020, December 30th of 2020, with final acceptance in early 2021. So we do have another about five years to go on the project. Some of the significant dates are that Grand National overpass that Frank mentioned should be done by fall of 2017. And so that'll get folks across from kind of where the fun spot is, over to the west side of the interstate there. So that'll be really good to get folks back and forth. Eventually, the Grand National overpass will also connect to the express lanes. So if you're in those, on that overpass, you'll be able to get directly into the express lanes. And then Kirkman will continue to serve I-4, the general use lanes. They're very close together. These are just a couple graphics of the Grand National area to show you where it's at. So it crosses just north of Kirkman or east on the interstate, connecting Oak Ridge and Major Boulevard. I don't have a picture of it here, but something else significant that's happening in this area is we're going to build a pedestrian bridge on the north side of the intersection at Kirkman and Major. So right there at the entrance to Universal, there's a lot of tourists that come, and they stay at the hotels nearby, and then they walk across Kirkman there. They're going to have a pedestrian bridge to get them across that intersection. And our website, i4ultimate.com, we want people in Central Florida to know about the project. This is your one-stop shop to find out about what we're doing, when our lane closures are, when you're going to be impacted. We have an app that has gone live. You can download it to your phone for free. You can sign up for alerts. I live up in Altamont Springs. Maybe I don't care about what's happening at Kirkman. I get all of the alerts. But if I didn't care, I could turn off those alerts. It's very customizable. But maybe you're driving down there for something special, and you just want to see, okay, what am I going to hit after that concert that I went to? You can go online. It's updated daily on whatever our lane closures are going on. So it's a really good website. You can also get directly in touch with the project there. Contact us. It goes directly to our public information officer, who sits, his office is next to mine, and we talk many, many times a day. So with that, are there any questions?
Questions? So Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Stewart?
Mayor, I don't have any questions, just a few comments. Thank you for coming this morning to give us an update on this project. I just want to thank you for your commitment to our city, but also to the Pine Hills area, and especially to Paramore, to make sure that you are actively out there with the people and trying to make sure that they're getting job skills and training, and also jobs. I always say, if you don't know, the best social program is a job. And I know that you have constantly been in the Paramore area, giving updates with closures. And also, I hear one of my H O A residents tell me just yesterday that you'll be there sometime this week or next week, giving an update and also telling them about training and job opportunities. This project is very, very important, I know, to the mayor, myself, especially to the residents of Paramore, because with our housing initiatives, this apprenticeship training that you've been working with our blueprint program is connected to housing, to make sure that the folk there that are underemployed right now have a training and skills and a certain income to where they will be able to purchase homes there in the Paramore area. So I wanted to just, again, thank you for your commitment. And I know before the project got started, you stated these things, but you have kept your word. And I just want to highlight that. Also, the aesthetics downtown is going to be such an enhancement to that entertainment complex that we're actively, with other community stakeholders, putting in place. Wanted to tell you, I think it's beautiful what you're doing there. And there was one thing, the aesthetics over in the Griffin Park area that I did have a little concern about, is when the bridges and the walls. I think I spoke with you, Noran, about that. I don't know about the movement. I know it was going to cost extra dollars, and it wasn't in the planning. But one of my concerns was, when we put that bridge there, we have such a beautiful downtown with the residents can see from that Griffin Park area. And I know when they look downtown, it's almost like a beacon of hope, right, with all the lights and the progress here downtown. And I don't want it to be shielded away from them, because oftentimes, what we see, we can behold, right? And I know I was traveling from U C F last week, and for a certain part of that toll road, there was this clear wall, and you could see over into the neighborhoods. I didn't know if there might be some plans for that there in that Griffin Park area, so that it won't be closed off from our downtown.
Right now, it is not in the contract. You know, we could see what that cost would be. I heard that...
Seven million?
It doesn't seem like it would be seven million, does it? But I remember us checking that out beforehand, and it was seven million, so...
You know, Noran, I checked with the Expressway Authority, where I had seen that clear retaining wall was where you get off the 417 onto the 408, and there's a lake right there, and it's a great view. And I was just thinking that, for instance, that exit ramp that comes on to Ivanhoe, you'd be able to look at the lake the whole way down the ramp if you had a clear side retaining wall. But they said it didn't cost them any more than the regular wall if it's shoulder-mounted. And I think most of yours is, right?
Right. And I think part of it is if it needs to be traffic-tested as well, because we've met with the manufacturer of them. They've come in the office several times.
Of the same thing at the Expressway Authority?
The same exact stuff, acrylate. And the cost differences that they gave, the cost that they gave us was about $7 million for the length that we were looking at. So I mean, we can take a look at it again.
So what is that per?
Was that for the whole wall, or could you do a peek-a-boo?
For the lengths that we were talking about.
The whole wall?
Yes.
What does that end up, the foot, or how do you measure that?
I'm sorry, what?
How much is it per foot, or some?
It's been a while since I've looked at it. I can certainly get that to you.
Okay. Because it may be that we want to help upgrade some places in the city or something that's something less than $7 million?
Yeah, right.
Okay. Commissioner Hill?
That's all I had to say. I really was concerned about that wall there, and your great saying about the Ivanhoe, that lake. And that was the area that I saw last week. So, great job. Thank you for doing all that you're doing. But I really do want us to look at that Griffin Park wall, because I don't want that area closed off from our city.
Okay. We'll definitely have them take another look at it and double-check the costs, or maybe just make a peek-a-boo window or something, because you don't have to do the whole thing. I know the Expressway one seemed like...
It's just on the curve.
Just on the curve, yeah. So we'll relook at options.
Commissioner Stewart?
Let me follow along the same lines. And one of the challenges I have is that when you kind of come in from the north and you kind of hit Ivanhoe, Lake Ivanhoe, it just is a gorgeous spot to be able to have that central feature. I appreciate what you all have done. And if we get a chance later on, maybe we can kind of talk a little bit offline about some suggestions I've got. It's just, it's really a neat place to do something, but it's also, we've added five or six additional lanes there, which has become really hard for us to do something. So I've got some ideas. So I'm not going to bore you with those here, but if we can talk about it.
We'll get them.
Will you let me do that?
Yes, we'll set up a meeting.
All right. A couple of things I've saw on here, I want to kind of make sure that, if I can get some help from you. The first is, how are we, and I guess I ask this to you, Mayor, how are we coordinating with the Blueprint Office for recruitment of people from the Paramore area?
Directly, I believe, right?
Yep. We actually, just last Wednesday, had a meeting at the Training Development Office with Blueprint, with Mr. Brooks, Byron Brooks, several other folks from the city, to make sure that we are coordinating directly. I know that they're referring folks to S G L's office, and we're helping to track which of those referrals were hired and that type of thing, so.
I mean, part of the challenge of the Blueprint and the stuff that we can control is to create a larger number of people from the minorities that are being hired. That's kind of our deal.
Right.
And your deal, I would love to be able to, much like what you're saying, just to track them. We placed 30, we placed 40. I mean, if you're looking for 350 more workers, and you're going to have to reduce and replace them as some existing, the 650, you've got a lot of potential here. Along the same lines, do you have some public posters that we can put out? I know that...
Sure.
At the Christian Service Center, I'd love to put them around where our staff or our clients come. Exactly.
Yep. We've got a lot of these.
Perfect, that'd be great.
That we'd be happy to drop off at your offices, or wherever you want us to drop them off.
Drop them off here, we'll get them out between my contacts and Commissioner Hill's contacts. I'd like to get those out, because the people...
And we've also got a flyer that I've got PDF'd that I can email, have emailed out. And that has all the information people need on it, so it's good to put on bulletin boards and things like that.
And the last, which is the hardest part, that concerns me a great deal, is signage, especially during construction. I know that one of the challenges we had when we shut down Ivanhoe was we told people that we shut down Ivanhoe after the previous exit. In other words, we told them at Amelia that Ivanhoe was shut down. So the only choice they had was to go to Princeton, which created confusion. And we came back and looked at it and said, let's move it back further. I know we're going to be shutting down some roads along I-4, Garland, and a couple like that. And y'all have been very responsive, and I appreciate that a great deal. But the biggest challenge is just telling people how to get around. I mean, it's, you know, it's going to be, you know, five years of, I won't say a bad word, because I don't want to look like a presidential candidate, but five years of trouble and challenge. And so thank you for what you've done. And anything we can do in terms of temporary, I know that I'm prepared to help out. I know that Charles is prepared to help out. And we've done a good job on trying to respond. Sometimes, we just can't do what needs to be done. But I think we, y'all have been overly responsive, and I appreciate that a great deal.
Thank you. We've also, we have weekly maintenance of traffic meetings where we talk about what are the big closures coming up, what's going on. And attendees at that meeting is also our public information office, because they'll see things a little bit differently than maybe the designer, than the M O T guys see. So we're trying to bring all of those folks together to try to catch those ahead of time. We're not going to catch everything, but we do appreciate your input along the way.
Y'all are doing a great job. Appreciate it. I will tell you, interesting, I get something almost every three or four days about what's coming up, because I'm on the observal. And I don't know how to do it, but the challenge is, it's a social media problem, is that when you send it out often enough, I don't even read it. So I don't quite know how to kind of get through that for four or five years. But I'll tell you, you've been wonderfully responsive, everything that you have promised in terms of getting it out to me. So the problem's really on me. I don't read it until I go, oh, my gosh, now I'm in a traffic jam. Now I'm trying to read it on my phone, going, which is the worst thing possible? But I do get the notices, and very grateful for that, and appreciate what y'all have done from that standpoint. That's really all we can ask. And it's going to be a challenge, but if we can get the word out, we appreciate that. So thank you. And thank you very much for what you're doing. It is yeoman's work, and I love working with you guys. Thank you very much.
So that's great on the workforce. I hope you can keep pretty detailed records, especially maybe out of category of ex-felons. I don't know if you're capturing that or not.
I'm not exactly sure, but I know that Blueprint is going to be working directly with Keith Taylor at S G L to get whatever information they need.
Mayor, if you'll allow me, along the same lines, I think we would like to know what neighborhoods they come from. I don't know that we have to know that they're...
Probably zip codes is what they need.
Zip code would be a good, you know, 32805 would be a good zip code that we want to track.
Right. I know that when we pulled last week's records, we have 30 people in Paramore. And I don't know if it's zip code, or if it's, you know, how they know exactly. But we are trying, we do have that data, if it's...
Other idea, along the same lines, with the limo line that's going right next to the Robinson location, that's a, helps in that transportation. The hardest challenge we have in the future is to address our own mass transit issues. That's not anything to do with you, I think. We have to kind of address it all together.
And it's not far from the Link Central Station as well.
Exactly.
So folks can come in from other areas.
Get to there, they can get the thing up and down the road, that'd be perfect. Thank you.
So just anecdotal, where I work out, I live in College Park. I work out over, off of Virginia. So I use the New Hampshire underpass, and it's been closed occasionally. That inhibits my quality of life, by the way, to the extent. But the anecdote is, that's where they stage, there's a staging area right there. So...
So many mornings when I come through there, the crew is out warming up. So I have not seen that in construction before, but they're out there doing group stretching and, yeah.
They do it all over, even in our hub office. At 7:00 AM, they're apparently up in our orange conference room, all stretching. Salaryed guys, everybody.
I love those hats, the ones in the night where they got the lights all the way around, the hats for safety. How cool is that?
Yep, we're actually looking at them for DOT.
Right. And, you know, we did have the unfortunate incident, you know, it's, one death is a tragedy, and we don't want any. I'll say that this contractor has, in my career, almost thirty years, I've never seen a contractor as safety-conscious. I thought our Sun Rail contractor set a new bar for safety until we met these folks. Everyone is very well-trained, they take it very seriously, and so I've been very impressed with that. The other issue about the traffic control, and I'm going to do a plug here for a program, an app that you can download that Florida DOT works with, is called Waze, W-A-Z-E. And it's adaptive. And what they do is they use all the information that we're feeding them, and they have saved me so many minutes when I'm driving down I-4, and it catches there's a problem, and it will reroute you. It has been very effective. It's been underway a couple of years, and the more people that join, the more people feed the information, and the more accurate it is. So if there's a problem on I-4, it can tell you which, it gives you the option of rerouting, and, you know, so you put your endpoint destination. And so I encourage you to try that, W-A-Z-E, and see if it works for you as well.
W-A-Z is a zebra?
Yes, W-A-Z-E. It's called Waze. And again, the Florida DOT and Waze do have a partnership statewide.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do have one question that I'm often asked when I'm out, about minority truck drivers that own their own trucks and dump trucks. How do they become certified? Is there still opportunity for them to be a part of this project?
Yes, I'm going to have Lorraine go into detail, but they're spending a lot of time looking at the best ways to track, and it's become, that's where a lot of our minority percentage comes from. So they had trouble in the beginning, and Lorraine will go over how they got past that, and now I think it's doing much better.
Yep. So I believe there are still opportunities. We have a lot of trucking that's going to need to happen over the next five years. If you go to the i4ultimate.com website, the slide I have up now, there's an FDOT pre-qualification DBE/SBE tab. That has the information to how to get in contact with our district office, our central office, if you're not already DBE-certified, or small business certified. So we can get you certified on that end. And there's also on that same page, how to get in touch with SGL, which is who is actually doing the hiring on the project.
Isn't that page just part of our packet here? For now. Okay, I have it. Thank you.
So yes, if they had trucks out there that were not DBE, they would personally talk to them and tell them how to get to that, and making sure that the tagging on the trucks were correct, and have spent some time on that. It's one of the things we talked about at our High Level Management Review Board with SGL. The other thing as far as safety, you can tell folks, that's very important, I think, and it might make them be a little bit calmer when they start to see these walls go up, is they, to even get on the site, any part of the corridor for the whole 61 miles, everyone, including reporters, myself, everybody, has to take a four-hour course. And it's done in sections, because it's being designed and built in sections. And so they give you at the end a card, so that anybody, anybody that took the course, if they were on-site, they could stop what's going on, or if they saw something that they thought was unsafe. And then the inspectors and the workers would go look at what they thought was wrong. So, you know, it's going to get, it's going to start to be looking high, these walls are going to go up. But as far as safety, and I think if you notice, this particular job compared to a lot of jobs, they're very neat. And I normally, you know, my artsy side does not make me very neat all the time. And so I'm so impressed by their piles of work, it's very orderly, and makes the, it's better than the others, if you start to notice. But if people talk to you, and you talk to them about this job, let them know that they're serious about safety enough to have to take a four-hour course, and that anybody could shut down the job.
So just one last thought. I was trying to add up all the transportation infrastructure that's going on during the next five years, and it's somewhere in the range of $10 billion when you take what you guys are doing, Wakaba Parkway, I-4, what the Expressway Authority's five-year work plan, Sun Rail, the south terminal of the airport, all aboard Florida. So I don't think there's probably anywhere in the country that has that much transportation infrastructure going in in the next five years. So good job, DOT team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second workshop relates to the Central Florida Leadership Academy, and you'll recall, gosh, I can't believe it's been six years, but six years ago, the city leased facilities to the Central Florida Leadership Academy, which became a charter school, a new charter school, offering character-based education as a school of choice for families in the Orlando community. And I've asked Jody Litchford, who is a volunteer leader at the school, I emphasize volunteer, to give us an update.
Thank you very much. And thank you for, you know, kind of believing in us when we were just a dream six years ago. I want to tell you, remind you a little bit about what we've been able to build, and just give you a very brief update. So we are an Orange County public charter school. Anyone in Orange County can attend, it's free tuition. And we have students in our school from every one of your districts. Our students mostly come from the area around us, but fifty of our students ride the Link's bus system in order to get to our school every day. We are a character education school, and that's what our unique design is. And we try and equip our students with the character tools they need to be successful in life. And in addition to the academics, that's what we do. We are a Hyde school, which means we are affiliated with some schools that started in the northeast in 1966, and have been doing character education since. There are a couple of boarding schools, a magnet school, and five charter schools that are operating around the country, and with the same plan, so we're not reinventing the wheel. We take a whole-child approach, is what we do. So we have, all of our students participate in athletics, performing arts, and we have a strong parent and family education program. We want kids to find their passion, try different things, take risks, and show courage. And we do that through our normal programming. We are all about leadership, and a huge part of leadership is community service. All of our students participate, really, in more than one community service project every year, because we do several school-wide. But then all of our students have small groups they meet with, and they do community service. This happens to be my, what we call Discovery Group, Disco Group, serving at Daily Bread. So, but everyone in the school is giving back to the community. We try and do fun things. We have a junior JROTC program at our school. We did, pinked out for breast cancer awareness, and raised funds for breast cancer awareness, and we do collections and things to give back to the community. We did something kind of exciting this year. We piloted a neuroscience program. We're the first pilot in North America, and it is a sort of a brain, cross-brain training to see if it improved our students' abilities to focus and their memory. We've turned the results into a University of Tennessee professor who's analyzing them, but I saw the preliminary results, and they were really awesome. So we're very excited about that. We are fully accredited. We got a school grade this year of B, and you don't want to ask me what I think about school grades, so I'm going to move right on to the next slide. CFLA by the numbers. We started in 2010 with eighty-three students, and then we've gradually grown every year. We had 123 the next year, 150 the following year, 171, 183, and we're adding a grade a year. So this year, we actually go from six to twelve. We have our first graduating class, we have 230 students. And we're very, very excited about our graduating class and being, you know, kind of full. And you should see that school. We are bursting at the seams, and it's a great thing. Our first graduating class, everyone plans to go on to either college or into the military, and everybody seems on track to do that. And that's also very exciting. Our dropout rate is basically zero. It's hard to drop out of our school when there are only twelve, there's twelve in the graduating class, there's twenty-three in the upcoming class, and then we have forty in the next class. So we're getting bigger, each of our classes is getting bigger. But we're able to pay a lot of attention to the kids and make sure they get, you know, what they need and where they need to be. The majority of our students are on free and reduced lunch. We're not a high-income group, but we do span sort of the whole spectrum. We are very diverse, and those are our numbers, thirty, most recent numbers, 34% Hispanic, 33 African-American, 28 Caucasian, three Asian, and two multiracial. And we have been historically diverse throughout the time we've been a school, and we're kind of proud of that. And if you come to our school, you will see that we don't have people hanging out in cliques, that we just kind of all get along. But I will tell you that kids aren't numbers. And that's the beauty of a small school, is that we just have the greatest group of unique and talented students, and they're a joy to spend time with, and we have a great time. And, you know, with your help, we've been able to do great things in a lot of kids' lives. And we affect the lives of not only the 230 students there and every year, but their families and their community. And I think it's a wonderful thing. In a nutshell, who we are is we believe that each student is gifted with a unique potential. And our job is to help them discover that potential, and find their passions, and pursue it. We have a unique disciplinary system, which I think really builds our community, which is a restorative discipline, which is, if you do something wrong in our school, we want you to make it right. So you come back and you give back to our community in order to do that. What the future looks like is, we'd like to double in size. We hope to be 500 students over the next probably six years. And we are, we hope to become a lab school for this type of character-based education. We are actually in pretty deep into some discussions with the Hyde schools, which is what we are, about moving their charter school headquarters here to Orlando, and helping our school become a laboratory school. They haven't, they've given some preliminary, yes, they haven't had their final board meeting on that. It's going to come in the next 30 days, and we're pretty excited about that, what that might look like for us. So, you know, your faith in us made this all happen, and so I wanted to come here and give you a little report and say thank you. I have with me one of our really fabulous students, Cortez Fisher, and he's going to say just a word or two. And I want to tell you a little bit about Cortez, though, because he's an eighth grader at our school. He's been there since sixth grade. He is, has the strongest work ethic of any, I think, person I've ever met. In fact, when we were driving here, Cortez, there's no school on Friday, and Cortez says, "Well, do you all need help on Friday? I know the teachers will be there, I'd like to get some community service hours, I'd be happy to come and help if you need anything done." And that's, you know, that's the great kind of student he is. And he's not unique in that, but he is stellar in that. So I asked him to come, it's his first visit to City Hall, and he'll say...
Welcome, Cortez.
Morning, Mayor. Good morning, commissioners. How are you doing today?
Great.
I'm going to give a little Hyde introduction we do at our school. So my name is Cortez Fisher, I'm 15 years old, I'm eighth grade, have been attending CFLA for three years, hoping to graduate from there. My favorite thing to do in my free time is probably help out around the school, or the community, or play the violin. I'm actually in junior ROTC, I just got promoted to sergeant. I get promoted, well, actually this week, Tuesday, to first lieutenant. I'm actually, you know, over middle school and half of high school. I just want to thank you guys for giving us a great opportunity for, you know, CFLA. I really like it, there's not, there's no bullying, you know, there's no cliques, you know, everybody falls in together. We have, you know, houses, we have Wasi-Wasi, Jack and Gora, Topahari, and Butter Sog, and we just like do friendly competitions, you know, who can draw the fastest, or, you know, who can give the most house spirit, or something like that. We got it from the Harry Potter kind of-ish. I believe the teachers went on a kind of a...
Staff development.
Yeah, staff development, yeah. We just got that, and I really love it there. Like I said, I'm hoping to graduate from there, and once again, thank you guys for...
Cortez, where do you live?
I live in Orange County, on 3247 Coleman Place.
Commissioner Hill's, isn't it?
Yeah, Commissioner Hill's. So, yeah, Lakeman.
Okay. Oh, Lakeman, okay. Commissioner Sheehan, then Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. And Jody, I'd like to thank you and Central Florida Leadership Academy, because this has just been a wonderful amenity in District Four. And I just want to say that Jody didn't have an easy time starting this school. I had a commissioner on this dais that tried to stop us from opening this school. It became a school board versus city council thing, which was ridiculous, because I don't look at charter schools as competing with schools like they do. I look at it charter schools as providing opportunities that maybe the school board won't or can't. And this is a wonderful example. One of the concerns that I've got with what's happening with the schools in downtown is they're going to be lacking diversity, there's going to be segregation, and this school does not do that. This school is a beacon, you know, we're going to be losing Fern Creek and Colonial Town, we're going to be losing some of that diversity. Howard's going to become a performing arts school, and I'm very concerned that there's not going to be opportunities for my minority children, and there's not going to be opportunities for everybody to work together and get along, because I think that is a very, very important part of education. So, Jody, I applaud what you're doing, I love what you're doing. I think it's vital and necessary, because I don't want to see the schools, I'm going to use the term whitewashed, I don't want to see us not learning to get along. I think that these, that your school provides an amazing opportunity for children to learn and grow. And I can't say enough wonderful things about it, maybe politically incorrect for what I'm saying, I don't care, because what you are doing is amazing, and lifting up these kids, and I can't say enough about it. And, you know, going on to college or the military, we're teaching, you are teaching these kids skills, you're giving them hope, you're teaching them how to get to the next level. A lot of times in our school system, it's just about getting that grade. It's just about, you know, teaching to the test. It's not about teaching to life. And, you know, I get, you know, I get it sideways with my school board folks sometimes, but they don't understand that my passion is for these kids, my passion is not for a grade, my passion is not even for funding. My passion is to make sure, because all these downtown schools have suffered so much, I want to make sure that we're getting these resources, and I want to make sure, City Council, that we're using these after-school dollars for the kids that really need it, for the minority students, to make sure that we're propping up the programs that need to be taken care of, and that we're not just going to become, you know, after-school programs for the rich and powerful and everything like that. We need to make sure they're for everyone. And I do believe that education is the, you know, the great equalizer. So thank you for being such a wonderful model, and thank you for coming and speaking to us today. And I'm tired of people saying the kids can't succeed and don't care. You, young man, are a shining, shining example, a shining, finding example, it's early, of what can be done when we make that investment. So thank you, City Council. I know this was not an... And Jody, thank you for hanging in there, because I know that you were attacked personally and professionally for trying to do the right thing, and thank you for your commitment.
Commissioner Hill?
Wow, Commissioner Sheehan, that was powerful. I was brought tears to mine, because I could feel your passion. Ooh, that's hard to follow up on. Thank you for your commitment, and making that hard vote way back then to support this program. I had the honor and pleasure about ten months ago to visit the Leadership Academy, and Cortez was one of my tour guides. And as soon as I walked in, he shook my hand and introduced me to the kids there and the instructors. But when I walked in each classroom, every kid stood up and shook my hand and introduced themselves. There is, as you said, he is stellar, but he's not unique, because every kid there, There is, as you said, he is stellar, but he's not unique because every kid there, you're, you're training to be leaders, you're, you're training them how to have integrity, high self-esteem. I mean, from classroom to classroom. And what I did appreciate, Jody, as you stated on your slide, was the diversity, right? It wasn't just one set of majorities. It was, it was all you there and as Cortez said, they were all working together. They, they, you could see, even the instructors were special there. You can tell that they're not there for a paycheck, that they're there because they love what they do and they see the needle moving with these kids that, as you said, that are probably would in school be Title I students and heads, not heads in beds, but heads in school, but not pouring into that student. And how articulate they are, right? I, I went to public schools, so oftentimes my, I got a little eubonics, but you never would have known. I make fun of myself, but that Cortez and many of the students that I saw that came from District Six and District Five, you would have thought, and I hate to stereotype, that there were students from Lake Nona that had their own private tutors that were... So thank you for all that you're doing and I know every council member and the mayor will continue to support this program because you're doing a heavy lifting and they call Jody when she's here, she's our attorney. But these kids see you as, as their second mother. And, and thank you for just loving on them.
Thank you, Jody. Great job. Thank you, Cortez.
Yeah, we did bring you a little gift so you'll remember us.
Byron, he grew up, he's growing up in your own neighborhood.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I mentor a young lady at Central Florida Leadership Academy and she was accepted to University of Florida recently, so I just thought I'd put in a gator blood and...
We're going gators as well as others.
And thank you, Amy.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we have one more workshop and we've had a couple of quasi judiciary appeals recently that have highlighted a couple perhaps issues that we have with working of the HPB and BZA boards. And then specifically as it impacts setbacks in historic neighborhoods. So Commissioner Sheehan, we had a discussion, I think it was the last council meeting or the one before that, about taking a look at this issue outside of the context of the appellate process. So I'm going to ask Dean and Richard Forbes to present to us.
Thank you for the introduction, Mary, Mayor. As you said, there, there are issues between the HPB and BZA on setbacks that have propped up lately. At times, the HPB has recommended certain setbacks that do not meet the requirements of the Land Development Code for a proposed accessory structure. These recommendations are based on the historic pattern of development on the site or in the surrounding area. And again, that's important, on the site or the surrounding area. The BZA has on rare occasions disagreed with the HPB and has granted either a greater or lesser variance or denied a variance entirely. In the case of the February BZA meeting regarding seven-twenty-two East Amelia Street, the BZA recommended a setback of five feet where the Historic Preservation Board had previously required a setback of ten feet for a two-story accessory structure replacing the existing structure that was on the site. In the recent case of six-oh-eight East Concord Street, the HPB recommended a rear setback of five feet for a two-story accessory structure and the BZA concurred and granted the variance as requested. This BZA decision, however, was appealed by a neighboring property owner and the hearing officer determined that the BZA should not have a grant to the variance because the criteria for hardship were not met. This is an ongoing issue with regard to the BZA and granting variances. Accessory structures are detached buildings that contain garages under apartments. There are some pros and cons. The pros are it adds income diversity to neighborhoods, intergenerational opportunities, rental income for homeowners, density to support infrastructure in those neighborhoods. The cons, there are increased parking demands, higher density and possible amassing issues, but they all can be addressed. A one-story accessory structure is required to be set back a minimum of five feet from the rear property line pursuant to our Land Development Code. A two-story accessory structure is now required to be set back a minimum of fifteen feet from the rear property line. When the properties in the historic district were built, there was no rear yard setback defined for accessory structures. Here's an example of a historic house with a garage apartment. This is on Hill Avenue. And this kind of sums up the HPB versus BZA issues and then I want to turn it over to Richard. Dual-board decisions can result in conflicting decisions. We know that, we've seen it recently in the last few months. When there's conflicting decision, how is it resolved? Third, setback requests of this nature before the BZA do not meet the criteria for hardship and that's been a challenge. And then lastly, in historic preservation districts, which board is really best suited to make these setback decisions?
All right, just for a little statewide and national perspective, this issue of how variances for setbacks in historic districts is not unique to the city of Orlando. In a sampling of cities across Florida and the country, staff has found that many have amended their codes to allow the HPB to grant variances on the issues of setbacks rather than going to a secondary board of the BZA. A sampling of cities which give HPB decision-making on setback issues include here in Florida, Boynton Beach, Coral Gables, Fernandina Beach, Fort Pierce, Hollywood, Miami Beach, Palm Beach, St. Augustine. And these are all certified local governments here in the state of Florida. Certified Local Government is a program that's a national program that is administered by the State Department of Historical Resources and what that means is that we are certified in the fact that we have programs for historic preservation, we have in our GMP and we have standards for our Historic Preservation Board. The current review practice for HPB, in reviewing a request for a variance to the rear yard setback for a two-story accessory structure, the HPB looks at historic materials, including sandborne fire insurance maps, to determine what the prevailing pattern of development and character for these types of structures historically. Some areas of historic preservation districts have patterns where there are two-story accessory structures five to ten feet from the rear and some do not. And that's very important because we're looking at the actual area of the district to see what historically was there. I mentioned the sandborne fire insurance maps. We use these quite a bit. These are very accurate, interesting maps from, they started in the eighteen, late eighteen hundreds. This, they run up through the nineteen, about nineteen-seventy. The particular ones we use vary from nineteen-twenty-five to nineteen-fifty-six. And in this sampling, this is a two-by-three block area along East Amelia. And there are fifteen accessory structures in this block area with less than the required setback for a two-story building. And that's how we determine what's there. These also show us any type of structure, one or two stories, that was on the site and that generally gives us a pattern of development as well. The current HPB review practice, the HPB also looks at the existing site and the location of historic structures on the said site. In the case of seven-twenty-two East Amelia Street, there exists a one-story accessory structure located at ten feet from the rear property line, which is proposed to be replaced. The HPB concluded that any replacement structure should be located with the same rear setback to continue that historic and existing pattern. So here was the case study for seven-twenty-two East Amelia, the site plan. There was an existing historic house and an existing one-story garage that was setback, as you can see, ten feet from the rear property line. What was brought before to the HPB initially was an addition to the existing historic house and a proposed two-story, three-car garage apartment at five feet from the rear property line. As that went through HPB, HPB approved the project with conditions. The addition was approved as submitted and the proposed accessory structure was reduced to a two-story, two-car garage at a ten-foot setback. And that was to be able to match, excuse me, that existing pattern. So the neighboring property as well to the rear of the Amelia Street property at seven-nineteen Harwood Street received a similar variance in two thousand and ten. The HPB then required that the new setback of the proposed two-story accessory structure matched the existing one-story structure proposed to be replaced. The BZA concurred and granted a setback of ten feet. This is just a small sampling of some of the approvals that have gone through the HPB and BZA over the last few years. As you can see, some were for five feet and some were for, for more than five feet, between seven and ten feet, depending on what that pattern of development was for that particular area. And here are a couple of examples of new garage apartments that had been placed behind a historic house. Typically, I think all of these that I'm going to show you have a five-foot rear yard setback. That's eight-seventeen East Livingston Street and ten-twenty-three East Livingston Street.
So what are the possible solutions? In light of the issues described, staff has developed several options which should address the issue of conflict between the two boards on setback variances and would also address a standard of review for those variances. So here's option one. The Historic Preservation Board alone decides on all appropriate setbacks for a main structure, including front yard, side yard, rear yard and for rear and side yard setbacks for accessory structures. The HPB is the most uniquely qualified board to make these setback decisions because of their knowledge of the particular areas of the historic districts and have the tools and understanding to evaluate the historic patterns of development. Continuing on option one, given existing language in the Land Development Code, there would not be a requirement for a new standard of review. The language in the code reads as follows. "Rhythm of solids and voids, new structures shall be designed and positioned on their lots in such a way so they reflect their regular pattern of structures and open space along the block face." Notwithstanding above, however, a code may would still be needed to allow the HPB to determine appropriate setbacks as they do not have that power today. In consideration of any alternate setback within the HB overlay, it is suggested that the board be required to maintain at least a minimum ten-foot, minimum distance between any structures on adjacent properties so that you do not have structures too close to each other. So the second option would be that the HPB alone would decide on appropriate rear yard setbacks for detached accessory structures only. The problem with that is that it may still have the dual-board conflict with other setbacks if the setbacks for the main structure were to be different in the recommendation from the BZA to the HPB. Would still require the same standard review as in option one. Option three would be to allow a five-foot rear yard setback for two-story structures in all HB overlay districts. The problem with this option would be that it may not be consistent with the historic pattern of development or secondly, allowing a five-foot rear yard setback for two-story structures across the city. That's even a broader proposal, but the problem may be that it's undesirable in many neighborhoods outside of the historic core where accessory structures historically have been close to the rear setback. So based on those three recommendations and they run the gamut from option one to option three, we're recommending that the council move forward with amending the Land Development Code to be consistent with option one. We would need direction from the council today to do that. Staff would also recommend that the city council approve the HB minutes for seven-twenty-two East Amelia Street, requiring the proposed accessory structures to have a setback of ten feet. I would note that the minutes for the HB board and the BZA on that case are not coming to you until your meeting of March twenty-eighth, two weeks from now, so you'll have time to think about that. But we are looking for direction as to how to proceed on amendments to the code.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just have a couple of observations. The code is actually fifteen feet for rear yard setbacks. So the reason that there's flexibility in historic preservation, which, you know, there is a lot of extra rules with historic preservation. It comes with this, but this is actually one of those situations where it's actually kind of a relaxation from the setbacks because the historic development pattern can be different. But that's the thing, it can be different between different historic districts, between even different parts of the neighborhood. So my concern is this is not the first time the BZA has made a different recommendation than a Historic Preservation Board. And I think that the Historic Preservation Board in a historic district should be the board that prevails when it comes to these kinds of decisions. I don't like being adversarial to my constituents. This is the second one, I think, that's come up in two months. I mean, I have a good problem and a bad problem. I have a good problem because so many people want to move to the historic districts because they're great neighborhoods. It's a great problem to have. The difficulty is in some, sometimes the code is confusing and people buy into accepting, you know, expecting something to happen when that might not very well be the case. And I know realtors a lot of times will tell people, they can get all kinds of things that they aren't entitled to, they can ask for, but they might not be entitled to. So I think there's some, you know, things that are going on when people are selling property and things like that. I think that's all the more reason why the code needs to be clear. There's lots of infill development happening in my district. I think that's a good thing, but I also want to make sure that that infill development is appropriate and, and matches the historic development pattern in the district. I also think that we need to be sensitive, you know, and not overbuild because again, I've had lots of constituents come to me and say, "Oh, I'm going to live, I'm going to live in this house forever, so I just need this variance so my family can make it." Next thing I know, it's a flip. So it's not been something that people are going to live in forever. I mean, they use that as an example, but it's not the situation. Usually it's, it's made for financial considerations and they make more money. I want people to make money, but I also want to make it sure that the structures that are built within these neighborhoods, they're going to be there for fifty, sixty, seventy, a hundred years. I want to make sure they're compatible with the neighborhood. So again, I don't think we should be making code decisions based on financial decisions. I think we should be making them based on what's best for the neighborhood and I think historic districts have been very good. I think the highest real estate value in my district is the historic districts and, you know, where there's the most restriction, you know, in terms of what you can do. And Commissioner Stewart, I think it's in your district too, Ballin Park, where there's a lot of architectural standards and things like that that have to be done. I think there's a reason for that because you have an expectation of when you're moving in, what's going to be there and things like that. I think that actually architectural, historic preservation, I think all of those kinds of overlays actually increase the value of the neighborhood, they did not decrease, do not increase it at all. So with that though, I think we need to clarify our code and I support historic preservation because I have seen what, how much good it does in terms of stabilizing neighborhoods. And if anybody wants to look at Lake Yola Heights in the nineteen-seventies, before they did their historic preservation code, it had become a lot of rundown boarding houses. It was a hot mess. I mean, I can remember, you know, my father used to work downtown and we'd come downtown and we'd drop him off and drive to Lake Yola Heights. And I was, I thought the grand houses were so beautiful even though they were a lot of more in disrepair. And I remember my mother telling me, "Oh, we would..." I said, "Mom, why can't we live down here? These houses are so pretty." I says, "Oh, honey, nice people wouldn't want to live down here." I mean, really. And now you look at Lake Yola Heights from the historic preservation that's happened in that neighborhood and it is one of the most desirable neighborhoods in my district forty years later. So that's why I support historic preservation so much because I know what a difference it can make in neighborhoods and why it's so important to support the Historic Preservation Board. And again, I think they're uniquely qualified to make these decisions, not the BZA. When I, I have to tell you, I think the BZA is just children are crying. As long as you have children and you cry, you can get any BZA amendment you want. I'm kind of frustrated with that. I would like for us to go back and train the BZA a little bit more because I think they're making some really bad decisions, but I think that we need to support historic preservation. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so does that mean you're supporting option one?
I am, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a lot of concern. I guess the concern I really have is in process. The, I'm not too awfully concerned about a five-foot setback or a seven-foot setback or ten, I'm just not concerned about it, only because when I look at the historic preservation, I'm looking at it as somebody drives through in the front of the building. The setback is a, is more a function of the use of the back of the property and less a function of the appearance of the historic side. So I don't, I don't have the same kind of angst that Commissioner Sheehan has. My concern is, is in process. And when I look at this, I, I'm trying to figure out, is there anything else that HPB ought to be responsible for as opposed to BZA? And do we try to define that today or do we look at that sometime in the future? That's the concern I have. I'm kind of okay with HPB doing it, but where I see the biggest problem that I have seen, and let me just kind of preface by saying, I don't see a big problem. I know a lot goes to Commissioner Sheehan because it's in her district. I don't see a lot of this from my standpoint. But where I've seen the last two or three that have come forward is that somebody has bought a piece of property under the idea that they can do something else with it. And then when they try to accomplish that task, they can't. Or there is a structure. So here's somebody who's invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into a home, wants to invest more and all of a sudden now they have the barrier, the idea of saying, "I stopped, before I bought the house, I asked my next-door neighbors, I'm going to go back, can I go five feet?" They all say, "Okay." And then we become, we become a structural barrier to that. And that's, and I don't know how to get that information to the people who actually are investing in, in the historic districts. That's where I have the greatest concern. So let me shut up and let you respond.
Appreciate the comments. The one thing we did look at is what if we were to give all variance powers to the HPB in historic districts? And we concluded that the only issue that they really need to be looking at are setbacks. We don't think that they should be looking at heights, they should not be looking at ISR or driveway width or anything else. Those are things that are driven really by a real hardship and should be... Those are things that are driven really by a real hardship and should be looked at by the B Z A. But in terms of this issue of neighborhood character and placement of structures on the property, the setback issue is the one where the Historic Preservation Board should have jurisdiction, and that's why we're suggesting option one, that would allow them to...
Is there anything else that there's joint jurisdiction over?
Hypothetically, virtually anything else in the code. You know, I mean, landscape standards, I could go on and on. The fact of the matter is, on those issues, I think it's probably appropriate that they...if the applicant feels that there's a hardship, or there's a challenge there, that they should go to the B Z A and still have those issues discussed. Honestly, in the 17 years that I've been here, I have not recalled anything other than setback variances as the ones that are causing the issue. All the other issues are not an issue.
If we have appearance as a choice, I mean, setback is a concern. I understand that. Other...I'm looking at, I don't know how to phrase this, but I'm looking at issue of replacement of windows in a house. I can remember, and maybe we've solved it already, but I can remember the conversation of having somebody try to have to go buy wooden windows for a house, when the appearance of having the new higher standard is, looks the same from the street, but because it's a historical district, we do something different. That seems to be along the same lines of, is that the responsibility of the H P B? Is that the responsibility of somebody else? And then at last is color. I mean, I'm not sure if color ought to be a choice in the H P B, based upon the...
Well, let's start with that one first. There are only two districts where color is even reviewed. As you know, when all of these districts went through the districting process, the neighbors had a big input into what was going to be in their ordinance, and what was going to be reviewed and what wasn't. Lake Cherokee is the only residential district where they wanted color reviewed. All the others said, "No, we don't want color to be reviewed." Then when we move on to the window issue...
Richard, I'm sorry, Mayor, if I may. And Richard, can you clarify that process? Because a lot of commissioners don't represent historic districts, and I think they're getting confused.
Or they were created prior to us getting here and trying to...
Right.
Correct.
So again, this is, there goes as a process. They have to vote to be in a historic district, and they have to vote on the criteria, Cherokee of which includes color.
Right.
Sorry, Mayor, just to interject that.
Thank you. So when...we have two things. It makes it even more complicated. We have our Land Development Code, which includes our historic preservation standards. And then we have each individual district's ordinance, which either adds or takes away certain things. So you can see, it can be very complicated to go through that. But just to move on to the issue you asked about, the windows, there are very clear window standards in our code, which talk about the preservation of historic windows, right? And that's a very important part. That's a whole nether...that would be a whole nether workshop, if you were so interested. But there's a lot of research that the historic windows are not so energy inefficient. There's a lot that can be done, as long as they're operating properly. Especially in our Florida climate, they're pretty good. But yes, sometimes the houses have had their windows removed prior to the historic district. So then we have what we call inappropriate sometimes, well, think of the jealousy window that went in where a beautiful old wood window was. In that case, it's a little more, there's a little bit more leeway. It just needs to look like a...it has to have the appearance of a historic window, but the material and such is a little bit more flexible. And you had one...was that good answer?
Well, the question is that that definition is clearly a definition that's within the H P B responsibility.
Very clear, yes. That's part of the Land Development Code for historic preservation.
So you can't go to B Z A and say, "This is an issue that I have. I want you guys to kind of override them." That clearly is defined that way, correct?
Yes. And the process would be, you would come in. Windows typically are done as a minor review. If the minor review committee said, "No, you can't replace those windows," you know, with a vinyl window, you've got to maintain the existing ones. And the homeowner agreed, their recourse is to take that request to the full board. And if they still don't, you know, if they still disagree with that answer that the board has given, then it goes through our typical quasi-judicial appeal process. And that's all in our existing code.
Richard, how do you get...Commissioner Stewart's other question, though, is the prospective landowner who sees 5-foot setbacks on either side of his property and buys, assuming that, or the realtor tells him, "Oh, yeah, no problem. You can easily get a variance for a 5-foot setback," and then it's denied?
Because the realtor goes to our general code and says, "Hey, 5-foot setbacks are okay. That's a big deal."
Well, no, if they looked at the code, they'd see that it was 15 feet.
He just saw the two properties next to him.
Right. So what we have instituted about maybe five or six years ago is, we are now pulling from the property appraisers' information when there's a change in ownership. And you might remember, you had a letter from both the mayor and from Commissioner Sheehan that goes in that packet, and a letter from myself as Historic Preservation Officer, giving them the information that they're in this historic district and whatever information we have about their house on file, which has been a great process, because now they have a number to call and they know where they're at and what they might expect. Now, when people come in, you know, people, they do their due diligence, and they call and say, "Well, I'm buying this piece of property. What are my rear yard setbacks?" And, you know, we tell them, "Well, it's 15 feet." And they say, "Well, I see that my neighbor has one at 7 and 1/2, or 5, or whatever it is." And then we say, "Well, there's that possibility. There's that chance." We never say that you're guaranteed that. We say, "There's a chance that you could go through this process, and we could take a look and see what might be the appropriate setback for a new accessory structure." But that's the limit of it. We don't tell anybody that they're just guaranteed a 5-foot rear yard setback, ever. And that may be, you know, realtors, you know, you have a hard time controlling what they're going to say, but we have tried to do whatever we can to get the word out there that we're here to help them and help you through the process and tell you what the information is about your property and would be important, you know, like if you say, "Well, you've got them all around you that are at 5 or 7 feet, then, you know, maybe we can go for that." But if not, we tell people, "No, there's not a single two-story garage apartment in your entire neighborhood, so you're not going to get it at 5 feet from the rear property line, because there isn't a single example." And we will tell them that right up front.
Are there any districts or areas of a district that would be appropriate to just go ahead and say, "There's 5-foot setbacks all over the place. We ought to just make it by right"?
That makes it difficult, because as you transition from the older area of Lake Iola Heights, is where you have the predominance of them at approximately 5 to 10. And then as you move east, as it gets, the neighborhood gets newer and gets into the 1930s, and then just around, you know, the pre-war buildup, there's not a single one. Same thing with Lake La Sona, the western part that's closest to Lake Iola, is the older part, and they have the predominance of these setbacks where it's less than 15 feet. And as you move east in Lake La Sona, again, same thing. It gets newer, and you don't have that pattern anymore. So it's kind of hard to just...I mean, you could do that, but then you would be getting them all at 5 feet. And that may be an issue, because, that's why we had that caveat in there, that we want to maintain 10 feet, because there are cases where there is an existing two-story garage apartment that is 1 foot from the property line.
Well, if you, let me allow, we're a little bit of a catch-22, because the challenge is that somebody who is a prospective property owner can't get a definitive decision prior to purchase of the property, because they're not...
But that definitive answer would be 15 feet.
Yeah, I mean, that's my point.
You need code, you're no problem. We're not even going to talk about it.
I understand.
But if you want to go through a process, then we can see if it's appropriate to have it at a different setback.
And by the way, I'm not arguing that. I mean, they don't have the right to ask for that unless they're the owner at the time. Asking prospectively is the hard thing for us to do. And so I'm not advocating that. But it is a little bit of a catch-22 for the owner.
And that's why we try and get people in before they purchase the property and try and tell them what, you know, what it means, you know, to be in the historic district.
The other challenge I see, on one or two occasions that we've had, is that the...somebody who's got the 5-foot setbacks on both sides now object to somebody else coming in and putting a 5-foot setback. That becomes a real kind of an issue. I think the H P B has done a pretty good job trying to navigate those waters. You know, now I've got mine, you can't have yours.
No, and that's one of the issues. We want to make sure there's 10 feet between buildings, because then that's consistent with the side yard setbacks, because, you know, your houses, side to side, you're going to end up 10 feet away from each other, because that's a 5-foot side yard setback. So that is consistent with that.
Thank you for your patience. Let me conclude mine by saying, I'm generally in favor of option one. I'd like to kind of see us go down that path, although I think also, I like the idea of the small committee that looks at some of these things prior to going to a full-blown process, to be able to provide some guidance, at least, and administrative approval, if you want to call it that, on some of these issues. But I mean, I think that's... Okay. Let me ask one last question, because I did write this down, and then I'll kind of give back up the floor. I apologize, Mayor. When you look at the other cities that you looked at, were those subsets of the cities, or were they the entire city?
Well, that would be for the Historic Preservation Program.
So only within their Historic Preservation area, within the major city? Okay, good.
Right.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, and the other thing, too, is that there may be a 5-foot setback, but it may only be a one-story structure. That's the issue, too. It's not just the...it's also the massing that comes with the two-story structure. So even though there may be structures 5 feet from the property line, they may be one-story garages, which nobody has the issue with a one-story garage, 5 feet. Even sometimes they're even 3 feet from the rear setback, you know, depending upon some of these older garages and stuff like that. The issue is, once they start getting up to two stories, and then if they have windows or looking into the other person's property, and all those kinds of things that then become issues with the living quarters above, and I can even remember in some of the historic districts where we said, "Okay, well, you can have a second story, but you can't put living quarters in there," and people did that anyway. You know, we've had some issues, we've had some instances of that. So, you know, again, it's trying to make sure that we have a consistency, and if we're going to do two stories, you know, the Historic Preservation Board looks at that and says, "Okay, well, if it's going to be looking at another property," or even we do that with some of our, you know, new structures, you know, you need to make sure that you can't, you know, look into the other person's backyard. There's all kinds of things that we look at when we're looking at those two-story living quarters closer to the property line. That's why we even have the 15-foot setback. I mean, again, I want to give the Historic Preservation Board the ability to look at whether these are appropriate, and that's why they're so close, is because they're historic districts. If we were going by the regular code, it'd be 15 feet. So this is where I get so frustrated with realtors misrepresenting what people can get, because again, if the realtors were to be honest, they'd be telling people, "Well, if you want to build something, it's 15 feet from the rear property line." And you can ask, you know, again, I don't like this misrepresentation. Well, somebody else got it, and you're going to be able to get it, because it might be a...it might not be a garage apartment. It might just be a garage, a one-story garage, without the garage apartment. So again, there's a lot of nuances with this, and I would like to let the Historic Preservation Board empower them to do their work.
Commissioner Stewart.
But going to historical H P B still goes through the quasi. So somebody outside of our system still looks, so if you've got 5, 5-foot setbacks, and you've got a...
Correct.
10-foot or 15-foot setback, somebody outside of ours is still making that decision through the quasi.
Well, if there's an appeal...
Or making a recommendation for the quasi.
If it's appealed, it goes through the normal appeal process.
I'm sorry, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, does option one give anybody any heartburn? We can't vote today, but...all right, then why don't you proceed to draft and bring something back to us? Okay, that concludes our workshop for today. General review, and leading off today is Commissioner Jim Gray.
No comment, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Stewart.
The only concern I have is the process of which we are going to do the approval on hearing second read on the Yard Crossman Project. So the assumption, I think, is we really can approve C8 until we actually approve second read. So I don't know how to put the process is. I thought that maybe a good process would be to move that C8 to New Business, and then look at having a discussion on the entire project during New Business, and then jump to second read, and then back to New Business. I don't quite know how to do all that. Just looking for a way to be able to have a conversation on hearing second read prior to adopting the Yard M P B recommendation. Don't know how to do that.
Okay. What we have, C8 is meeting minutes, proven the actions of the M P B, and then where do we have the yard on the second read?
Yeah, second read.
I'll take a look at that in the interim. Kyle, have you looked at that?
Yeah, and you can do, as Commissioner Stewart asked.
Just move to New Business, you couldn't come back.
Right. So have the ordinance first, and then if the ordinance is adopted, you could accept the minutes and approve the recommended actions of the M P B.
You know, why don't we go ahead and do that right now without objection? We'll move item C8 to New Business. Okay.
Okay, good. Yeah, the only other question is, I've gotten two responses back from a neighborhood of letters, and so I'll give these to the clerk, and they can be able to pass them out to the other commissioners.
Related to that item?
Related to that item, correct.
Okay. Commissioner Sheehan.
Mayor, did we call for public comment?
Not yet.
Okay.
Because I forgot.
So good. I just wondered, she wanted to comment, but she left. So that was the constituent from my district that was listening in on the...no, okay.
Yeah, but that wouldn't be appropriate for this meeting.
Oh, because it was workshop. I got you. Okay. I just, I know Byron wanted to meet with me on G1, so if we could get together after... Thank you, Byron. I'll see you after the meeting. Thank you.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, if Dean RJ can speak with me just briefly regarding Star Communications.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Star Communications.
Okay. And Commissioner Rangs?
Nothing.
Oh.
Oh, my gosh.
We haven't gotten to the big one yet, wait.
I'm trying to wake the council up.
Oh, my microphone's on.
Trying to make sure y'all are listening.
Okay, so we can all go back to offices and download Waze onto mobile devices.
Pretty cool.
All right, we'll stand adjourned, and we'll convene at 2 o'clock for our regularly scheduled meeting.